Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular meeting of the DeKalb City Council, February 10, 2020. Prior to our roll call this evening, I'd like to remind anyone in the audience who would like to speak to any item on tonight's city council agenda, or for that matter, any item that you'd like to speak to, to kindly fill out a speaker request form, they're in the foyer in the back of the room. Give that form to our city clerk Lynn Fazekas, and we'll get you on at the appropriate time. We would ask that you keep your remarks to three minutes or less to facilitate us moving through the agenda tonight. Having said that, I would ask city clerk Fazekas to call the roll, please.
Morris.
Here.
Fanouken.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
McAdams.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Favor.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Eight present.
Thank you. I'd kindly ask you to rise as we say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, item C on the agenda, approval of tonight's agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda? Hearing that we have none, I would entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman Verbic. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
Tonight's agenda is approved as printed. We now move to public participation, and we have one person who would like, who has indicated an interest that they'd like to speak at this point, and that is Duane Brown.
Duane Brown, the Farrara Candy Company has confirmed it has selected DeKalb to build its 1.6 million square foot distribution center and 466,000 square foot packaging center in the Chicago West Business Center. This is a culmination of the efforts by DeKalb Mayor Jerry Smith and city manager Bill Nicholas and the city staff, working with the developer to plan the site layout, loop the water mains, work with the utility companies for utility extensions, and the Illinois Department of Transportation to widen the roads. Working with Paul Borick and the DeKalb County Economic Development Corporation and all the taxing districts to obtain long-term property tax abatements and other concerns, including the DeKalb County Enterprise Zone. Receiving the support of state representatives Jeff Keiker and Tom Deemer and the capital program. Thanks to everyone involved in making this happen, the city needs to use this as a template to attract more industry and business to DeKalb. And thanks to the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Development also. Very good. Many times I stand here and criticize the city. You did it right this time. Let's continue this. Thank you.
Thank you, Duane.
Thank you.
Thank you, Duane. Are we going to accept that? That's good. Yes. Thank you very, very much. Appreciate it. Okay, there are no other folks at this point who would like to speak, so we'll move right on to presentations. There are no special presentations this evening. We do have appointments. This is usually done in an omnibus form. Is that okay with council?
Yes.
These are three appointments. Number one, appointment of Helen Umdenstock to the Citizens Community Enhancement Commission for the completion of a two-year term through December 31, 2020. Number two, appointment of Rebecca Hunt to the DeKalb Public Library Board for the completion of a three-year term through June 30, 2022. And number three, appointment of Sarah Fox as an ex-officio member of the Citizens Environmental Commission, and there is no term limit on that particular appointment. I'd entertain a motion to approve these appointments.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
Those appointments are approved. Item G, Consent Agenda. All items listed on the Consent Agenda are enacted by one motion unless a council member would like an item removed from the Consent Agenda, in which case we will discuss it separately. Any deletions or any requests for a deletion from the Consent Agenda? If not, let me read the following titles on the Consent Agenda. Number one, minutes of the committee of the whole meeting of January 27, 2020. Number two, minutes of the regular city council meeting of January 27, 2020. Number three, accounts payable and payroll through February 10, 2020 in the amount of And finally, number four, FY 2019 vendor payments over $20,000. I'd entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Morris. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
Thank you. The Consent Agenda is approved as printed. We now have one public hearing tonight, and I will read this public hearing title starting at 6:08. Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, Five-Year Consolidated Plan, 2020 through 2024, and the 2020 Annual Action Plan. This public hearing is there hereby open, and I'd entertain city manager Bill Nicholas to speak and introduce this item, please.
I'll just briefly introduce the item and then yield to anyone who wants to speak to it, and we'll get back to this at another point in the agenda when there is an opportunity for the council to act on the proposed five-year plan and the one-year action plan. So, as you can tell by the background and in recent years, you've been through this, our community development block grant monies are tied to a five-year plan under federal guidelines, and there's also an expectation that each year, allowing for the flexibility in what you can spend and what you haven't been able to spend, there is an action plan that you try to stick to, and then the next year you do another action. So you have five action plans in effect through that five-year plan. And the five-year plan has to hit certain general standards in four areas. We have to be able to address homelessness, the special needs populations among us, housing and community and economic development considerations, that's in general. And this plan that's proposed, the five-year plan goes from 2020 through 2024, and that's April 1, 2020 through March 31, 2024. The federal plan is on a different timeline than our fiscal year. A big part of the consolidated plan is citizen participation, and I want to applaud Joanne Rouse for having spread the word and appeared at a variety of forums and had some special informal meetings where people are invited to come to this room to speak and to share any of their concerns, and she's done so selflessly and many times after hours, before hours, and so forth. The action plan that's going to be discussed by the council later on has very specific recommendations for this year. I'd like to defer until we get to those to talk to that, but it's also on the agenda. And Joanne is in the audience tonight and will answer any specific questions you may have, but at this point, I think maybe we see if anybody wants to speak to it.
Okay. Is there any public participation, any public comment on this public hearing on our CDBGA action plan? I just want to commend Joanne Rouse for all the work she is doing. I continue to be concerned about all the paperwork that is intrinsic in this particular -- I mean, she brings me stuff like this to sign and trying to read through it and all that, but I guess it's just the nature of the beast. But I commend you, Joanne, for all your work on this, and if there is no other public comment at this point, I would open up to any questions or comments from council. We will be asked to approve the plan at a later part during tonight's meeting. Hearing none, I will close this public hearing at 6:12 PM. There are no additional considerations. Item I on your agenda, let's move to Resolutions J. Number one, Resolution 2020-013, authorizing a standard agreement for construction services with Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly Incorporated for architectural engineering, planning, and special services, Project DKB 4665 Crack Fill and Remark Runway 2-20 Design Phase at the DeKalb Taylor Municipal Airport, with a city cost for the design phase not to exceed $52,280. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderman Morris. Any further discussion? City manager Nicholas, please.
What we're particularly talking about here is the newer of the two runways, which is longer than a mile, as you know, the northeast-southwest runway 220. And when the asphalt paving, and there are many layers of asphalt there, begins to crack, it's a little more perilous than it is if it's on a street. If an airplane is hitting a crack at 150 miles an hour, it's going to be a problem. The federal government has very specific guidelines, unlike what we might be able to do on a street, defer, defer, defer. There is an expectation that to stay open, the runway has to be kept to certain standards. We are right at that edge. This particular project has been part of our five-year TIP plan, the Transportation Improvement Program, planned for some time. It was part of the resolution that the council passed back in November identifying four top priorities, and this was one of those. So the feds also expect and require that there will be a consulting engineering firm that does the specs and goes out to bid for this, and they have to be from a pre-qualified list. The federal government rules on the FAA rules on, and all of those pieces are in place. We bring this to you for your approval.
Any further discussion on this? If not, roll call, please.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
Thank you. That resolution is approved. Number two, Resolution 2020-014, authorizing a 2020 Census Efforts Grant Sub-Award Agreement with the Region One Planning Council. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Smith. City manager Nicholas, please.
It's pretty much as it says here, we have an opportunity to gain $73,930 in grant funding, and this resolution authorizes the mayor to sign this application, and we ask for your support.
Yeah, I'd like to just make a comment, if I may. I attended a job fair today hosted by the Census Bureau out at the office on Sycamore Road, and I met a couple of the regional execs, and they were nothing but highly complimentary about where this city is in terms of our census effort. Our hard-to-count committee, complete count committee, started late last summer in the fall, and we are really moving forward. And I just want to do a shout-out to Jason Blumenthal and Adam Grubbs and Joanne Rouse, and under the direction of our assistant city manager Ray Munch, along on this grant program with Sabrina Kikeandall from our Transit Division to get this going, a $73,000 grant which will help our publicity effort, because we need to get everybody counted in the city of DeKalb during the 2020 census. So having said that, is there any further discussion? We're asking to accept $73,000. It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
That resolution is approved. Thank you. Number three, Resolution 2020-015, authorizing the purchase and equipping of one Chevrolet Tahoe police vehicle based on the state bid contract pricing in an amount not to exceed $49,000. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Morris. City manager Nicholas, please.
Thank you, Mayor. As I mentioned in the background, there were three police vehicles that were to be replaced this year, and as you know, from just the last meeting, we were looking to wrap those amongst other vehicles in a leasing program and to get down to the basics on that and the specifics and bring that back to you. But I learned days after the last council meeting that the K-9 vehicle is down, because you know we have a K-9 unit and one dog, I believe. John? It's not very effective, and we can't get it to where it's supposed to go. It's a specially outfitted vehicle, of course. And the pending engine and transmission repairs are quite significant, and the police department did some quick checking around. It happens that there is a stock vehicle along the lines of what we would normally spec out that's available downstate with a dealer that's willing to match the low state purchase price. And rather than be ineffective in terms of this unit for a period of weeks, maybe months, we bring this back to you a little faster than we wanted, but sometimes those things happen, and recommend your support to proceed with the state bid price of $49,000.
Any further discussion on this resolution request?
One quick question.
Yes, Alderman Fanouken.
How are we disposing of the vehicle we're parking?
All adoption, and the proceeds from the sale go back into the fleet.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
That resolution is approved. Number four, Resolution 2020-016, approving the Community Development Block Grant Five-Year Consolidated Plan, 2020 -- excuse me, through 2024, and the Annual Action Plan, One-Year Use of Funds for the Program Year 27, which is April 1, 2020 through March 31, 2021. Entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Fanouken. This basically is approving what we had talked about in our public hearing, but city manager Nicholas, would you like to add any?
Yes, if you don't mind, Mayor. This is a specific plan. If you look on page eight of your background for this evening, you see the details of that. And in a very general way, in a useful way, each of these specific categories of costs fit in with those categories that are expected, that we're expected to address, housing rehab, public services, which includes public facilities such as sidewalks and also demolition in our case. If you look at the top, it says fiber optics. So many underserved areas are where persons of low to moderate incomes and disabled persons are living. The broadband and fiber optic services have not always been available in these areas, and so we're trying to push those, and a lot of this is in the AGN area. Street lighting, another thing, that's been a, that was a big part of the Antiglen North Plan, and there are some other areas in town where this can be used to help us, help offset the cost of installing streetlights for safety. Sidewalks, Twombly Road. We have a project, as you know, which this year is to be specked out, plans designed by DeKalb County in cooperation with them and the township of DeKalb. This is a three-way project. It's going to be utility work on Twombly. Ultimately, there has to be improvements, sidewalk improvements, so persons living in Eden's Garden and along the route over to Antiglen Road will have an opportunity to get there safely without walking in the street, and particularly the street now, which is very crumbly and alligator on the edges and through the field of the street itself. So that's an important piece. And demolition, and in particular, I don't know that you'd object, I don't think you'd object to this, 912 Edgebrook would be one of those candidates. And we don't have a lot of sources, recurring sources of capital money for such things, but this is one opportunity. This has to be approved by HUD, but if it is approved and we get this budget and we get the carry-on funds, I think we're in business in 2020 to do some things that people have been waiting for for a long time.
That's great. Any questions or comments? Alderman Favor.
The owner occupied rehab, it's not in the chart of available funds, but that's part of the program.
There's a housing rehab here.
Okay.
Third from the bottom.
I looked at it too quick.
That's all right.
The next question was going to be, what's the income cap?
Oh, boy. Joanne, you want to help me with that?
Well, it changes every year based on HUD's guidelines. I think right now for a family of one is $3,000, two is $5,000. If you have four, somewhere around $6,800, but it varies every year. Except by head of the member.
I think it's a great program. I think that's, to have funds available to help for exterior, interior improvements in the home, it's a forgivable loan. I think that would be fantastic. Probably, we need to get the word out to more people in our city, in our community, so they can take advantage of that program. Thank you.
Good point.
Yeah, amen to that, Tony. Thank you. Alderman Morris.
To add a question to what Alderman Favor was just asking, would they apply directly to the city for that, Joanne?
Yes. Contact me.
Okay. Awesome. Yeah, we'll spread the word, then.
Any further discussion? If not, we're being asked to approve this resolution. Roll call, please.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
Moving right along, we have a number of ordinances that we're being asked to consider tonight. One for second reading, initially approved on first reading on January 27. This is Ordinance 2020-005, amending Chapter 35 Towing, Chapter 52, Offenses Against Public Peace, Safety, and Morals, and Chapter 64, Smoking Regulations, to conform to new cannabis and tobacco laws. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved by Alderman Morris, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City manager Nicholas, any additional items on this, please?
No, we might have done this on second reading the last time, but it comes back to you. I didn't put any background in there. I can address any questions you may have, but I think the council was ready to vote.
Any further discussion? Alderman Fanouken.
It's still my understanding that as this ordinance sits, that it would allow for the smoking of cannabis in a retail tobacco store.
Correct.
I'd like to make an amendment that that section be stricken.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken that that item be stricken. Seeing no second, that request fails for lack of a second. Any further discussion on the original motion and second? Roll call, please.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
No.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Seven I, one N.
That ordinance is approved. Moving right along to L, ordinances under first reading. Number one, Ordinance 2020-009, authorizing a tax increment financing development incentive agreement with Rosa Balie for the rehabilitation of the property located at 206 East Lincoln Highway. I'd entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Fanouken, seconded by Alderman Smith. City manager Nicholas, please.
Yes, Your Honor. I believe the attachments to this item conform to the council's wishes from the last meeting, and I've identified in the background the amount, and I think that also is consistent with the council's direction. We ask that you consider this on first reading and second reading tonight.
Any further discussion? We discussed this quite a bit at our last meeting. Roll call, please.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight I.
Motion to waive second reading?
No, that's, yeah, actually, we wanted, the petitioner requested a second reading.
I'll move that we waive second reading and approve.
Yeah.
Second.
It sounds like the petitioner asked that we not waive second readings.
That's correct. That's from her counsel. Yeah, her counsel wanted it to be brought back the second time, actually. She's, she had.
Okay. Matt, you are speaking, and Bill, you are speaking. What are you guys talking about?
Well, Matt said that Rosa's counsel talked to Matt, I wasn't aware of this, and asked that this be heard only on first reading tonight. There are two members of the Bae family in the audience tonight. Rosa could not be here and is indisposed, but my understanding was they wanted to know where they stood so they can proceed to make arrangements with remodeling and getting on with business, so I don't know what the delay would be.
Yeah, my counsel had been recently retained, and that was the request that was made.
I can't hear you at all.
I'm sorry. The counsel for the Bae family was recently retained and made a request that they'd have some additional time, just to...
Well, the owners are here. I think they're the ones who pay the bill. Maybe they can address it.
So if, I mean, we've approved this on first reading, and delaying second reading simply would give the family time to?
It's not the family. I think there's a new counsel involved, new lawyer involved.
Oh, I see.
And they're thinking, well, I'd like to review the documents. I understand that, and if that's what they wish, that's what we'll do, but it's their choice.
Bill, do you want to withdraw that motion?
Well, I'm looking to see.
To waive second reading?
I'm looking at the owners to see.
I understand that, and if that's what they wish, that's what we'll do, but it's their choice.
Bill, do you want to withdraw that motion?
Well, I'm looking to see...
To waive second reading?
I'm looking at the owners to see what their preference is here.
Okay.
It doesn't do any harm if we do it. I mean, they don't have to sign it.
Hello, how are you? Hello, my name is John Balie, and on behalf of our family, we'd like to proceed forward as far as no reading, the second reading or what have you.
Okay. And this flies in the face of what your attorney had requested with our attorney, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
I know that our, one of the main issues was, was who are we contracting with? What was the name of the, was it going to be an LLC that they were going to form for this? They hadn't yet formulated that intent.
Can we come back and amend it, please?
We could, or we could just wait two weeks and we'll know it all.
All right, well, I'll withdraw then.
With a two-week delay?
That'd be fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then get together with your attorney.
Okay.
Okay, Bill, you're withdrawing that motion to waive second reading? Is that okay with you?
Withdrawn, yes.
On the Verbic?
Yeah.
Okay, so this ordinance has been passed on first reading. We'll bring that back to our February 4.
Don't know when. We don't know when. We'll try to do that.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't know when.
All right, well, let's move along then to item M, reports and communications. This allows our city council to make any reports that they like regarding not only what's happening in their ward perhaps, but what is happening in a general sense in the city, and we'll start with Alderman Morris from the first ward.
I just want to thank Joanne Rouse's hard work on this CDBG funding. A lot of it is going to go to do some great things in my ward, specifically Twombly and streetlights, and all of this is amazing, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything else, Carolyn?
That's all.
Okay. Alderman Fanouken?
You know, we're going through our efforts to land Hammer, and I'm glad that that's been successful, and I want to welcome Farrara here.
Absolutely.
We're very excited to have you, and you can see with the display across the counter here tonight that we're glad to have you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Fanouken. Alderman Smith?
Yeah, I have to agree with my neighboring Alderman on nothing but positive. I, on 36 ungosh years around law enforcement, positive response on this development, it has very been overwhelming, so good job, very good job.
Alderman Perkins?
No report.
Alderman McAdams?
No report.
Alderman Verbic?
No report.
Alderman Faver?
The seventh ward will be having a meeting next week, ward meeting. They don't have the time and location yet, unfortunately. I was hoping I would have that by tonight, but, so that'll come out, that'll be...
Okay, and you're going to get some media play on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, good. I do have a couple of comments for the benefit of the public. Let it be known that the evaluation process for our city manager is expected to be concluded in executive session tonight. I've read every Alderman's evaluation, and the synopsis was provided to Bill Nicholas. Tonight, Mr. Nicholas will have the opportunity to discuss the process and the evaluation findings. Obviously, as is the case with most personnel items, this information, much of it, is confidential. However, I'm pleased to report that unequivocally, this council is very supportive of the performance of our city manager, and we thank you for your service over the past year, Bill.
Thank you.
Number, my second comment is that I've had the pleasure over the past several years to meet with students at nearly every school in District 428. It's amazing how pumped up this mayor is when I'm provided this opportunity. Last week, I shared time with some fifth graders at Malta Elementary, and shortly before that, the third grade class at St. Mary's, they grilled me on all kinds of questions, what I do, where I go, have I visited President Trump, what I like to eat, et cetera. Today, in the mail, I received a few letters from these kids, and I thought you'd enjoy snippets from a few. Dear Mayor, thank you for your time you had with us. I learned that you get voted in to be mayor. I also learned that in your opinion, you think that Fatties has the best potato salad in the world. Number one, thank you, Mayor Smith, for coming and telling us what you do and how you were in the Army. I really enjoyed asking questions. And finally, I thought you'd really enjoy this one. Dear Mayor Smith, this is from a little girl, a Rusia. Thank you for coming to our class and talking to us. I still wish that my class could have a one-hour field trip to that candy factory you mentioned. Thanks for coming. It's just great to hear these kids' questions, and again, I really enjoy getting out and about. Not everything is as pleasant in my role as mayor as going to some of these schools, but I will echo what Alderman Fanouken and Alderman Smith have already done, and that is, the response to Farrara in this community has been just tremendous. Even the kids are talking about it, so I appreciate that. Those are my comments. Any comments from our city clerk, Lynn Physikas?
No report today.
And City Manager Bill Nicholas?
Just two items of general interest. Both the police chief position and the airport manager position were posted in the last seven days, so we'll be waiting to see what kind of response we get, and we'll keep you informed as time goes along.
Anybody else? If not, I would indicate that we do have an executive session tonight scheduled to, number one, approve personnel as provided for in 5 ILCS 120/2C1, and number two, to discuss collective bargaining as provided for in 5 ILCS 120/2C2. I'd entertain a motion to move into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Alderman Faver, seconded by Alderman Smith. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Faver.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Fanouken.
Yes.
Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Eight-i.
Thank you. We thank you for attending tonight. We now go into executive session for recess. Thank you.